I'm going to declare the, declare a quorum and call the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, August 27, 2018. Order, Carter Patrick, will you please call it all?
President or Mayor Pete Pedrick, Deputy Mayor Lawrence Garish, Councilors Jill Russ, Jamal Beckford, Stephen Sheffield, Randy DePoe, Rashad Carter, Finance Director Ronnie Haskett, Governor Patrick.
I know this is not on the agenda, but I would like to call for a moment of silence to honor Senator John McCain, the loss of Senator John McCain, who was instrumental. And I just want to take a moment of silence to recognize his death and our, send our best wishes to his family. Okay, we will start with item 716, which is highway garage gutter repair. So Steve, I think you're gonna do that. If you could come up next to Ron. I think this is in your packets.
Uh huh.
Steve, if you could just go through what we have here.
Uh, I don't know which one you're looking at.
We have the Yankee remodel proposal.
Okay, I mean, is it the repair or the gutter one?
Yes.
I'll start with.
Yeah, this is a gutter.
Okay, the repair of the, so on the east side of our garage, we have to do a repair on the siding, the drip edge, the gutter and the roof in one section, which has been like that for a few years now, so definitely needs to be replaced. Also the face of the J-channel, they're gonna try to match this color as much as they can, but it also affects our gutter on that side, so that water, that water, when it's not going down the gutter, comes in some of the building, which we have a concrete floor, but it still leaks inside of our door.
Well, and not only that, but in the wintertime, the, due to the leakage of this, it freezes and causes slip hazards.
Right.
And it becomes a safety issue. So that's one of the reasons that I wanted to move this up and get this gutter repaired. Ron, is there anything you want to add?
No, proceed with that.
Okay.
Okay. I should've started where Yankee remodeler gave us two proposals, as you see with your paperwork.
Yep.
The second one, we're going to have all of our gutters looked at. There are some seams that popped open from the ice storm that we had quite a few years ago, so there's seam repair, and they're also gonna add additional hangers that weren't on these gutters when our building was first built in 1997.
So the total cost of the project is the 4,800 plus the 9,780, or is that?
The total for the gutter is 10,212. The gutter part.
It's all three of those options added up. On the second page, it's 2,940 to 2,372.
Okay. So this first one with 9,780, that's?
That's purely the fix of the damage section.
Okay.
The other piece is the fix of the gutters on the entire building.
Okay.
If you look at those gutters, like you were saying with the next one, when it slipped down, the gutters are actually bowed down.
Okay.
And the seams have split.
So the number that the council should see on the resolution is 9,780 plus 2,940 plus 2,472 plus 4,800.
Brilliant. They're two separate projects. We want to bring them together, so it didn't look deceiving that we were trying to split projects up. They are two truly the same project.
Right.
We just want to bring them as one, because it's gonna happen at the same time, and a fix of the gutters and a fix of the gutters.
Sure.
And it's all even just the gutter pieces over the head, so we just figured we'd bring it all in one package.
Okay. Any questions for Steve B., Councilor DePoe?
I just wanted to ask, it looks like on here, this work has needed to be done since 2016, because that looks like the original quote we asked from them.
Yes, yes. Both of these have been awhile. The siding, the repairs on the east side's been a little longer than that, but the gutters, I think that was after that, that bad ice storm we had that winter.
Mm-hmm.
Or it collapses gutters all the way around.
That's all.
Deputy Mayor Garish?
Do you have money in your budget this year for that?
This is actually the money for this. We uncovered at the end of last year, there was money left over pending approval from the council board.
So this is last year's money, and then once we go from here to the, from the Committee of the Whole to the council, and it's approved, then that money will be expended.
I would think it would be better to do the whole thing now, rather than do it piece by piece. It would end up probably being a lot cheaper to do it this way than to come back to it later.
Councilor Russ?
Oh, I was just gonna ask that everybody talk up, because last week, people were talking about how they couldn't hear us.
Okay.
So that was my only point.
Yes, we're, we're still working with the engineer and the contractors on our air conditioning. Any other questions or comments on this item? Now we need a motion to move this to, Deb, would that be the 4th of September? Because the 3rd's Labor Day, is that correct?
Yes.
Should be the 4th. Should be the 4th. Okay. So we need a motion to?
I like the motion that we move it to council meeting of September 4th.
Second.
Anyway, we have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, extension, motion carries, announce. Okay, Steve, that's good. We'll call Eric up next. 717 is the next one we're gonna look at. This is Eric Webster. Eric is our, uh, is our maintenance mechanic, but it?
Garage mechanic.
Garage mechanic.
Yes.
And so he's gonna talk about the purchase of 2019 International 6x4 construction dump truck. This is in this year's budget that was approved, and Eric, do you want to go through why we need it and?
The truck we're replacing is a 2005. It's a 10-wheel dump truck. It's our most used vehicle. It's, uh, it's 56,000 miles, 7,000 hours. We try to rotate it in and out every 10 years. This truck had a heated body in it, so the body's on its way out. It's time to replace it. Really is. It's, it's our most used unit.
Okay. Ron, you had some additional comments regarding the bid?
The bid was piggyback off of, I believe it was the water shop when they did the truck last year, which we also did the truck for the highway department. Previous year, also from another local municipality, Nutmeg was the little bit as well. So Tim kind of reached around and made sure from the bid process we were good. There's one change from the original package that you do have that we're waiting on, we need to make a new copy. It was just a change in the tire size and then a spare tire for the vehicle. So the price of the truck in the proposal that you have in front of you was 111,590, which is on page 3 of that proposal. The new price is 114,106.36, for an increase of 2,516.36. That's to get the tire sizes down. They were looking for, and also a spare rim and tire for the front and the back to have in case something were to happen like Eric said, it's a low-C vehicle, we don't want it to be down.
For some reason, the spec got a little crossed up, so they came with an 1100 225 tire. Our whole fleet runs on 12 R 225s, so it's just common sense to keep them all the same. So we've interchanged them with all of you.
Sure.
That increase, and then the additional cost, so you'll see the 111,590, and then on another page, it was the head on, it was HP Fairfield LLC doing business as WH Rose. And that, that is for the body for the truck. So the first piece of the International is just the cabin chassis. The piece from WH Rose will be the body and the lift gate, so that's an additional 51,571. It'll all be purchased through Nutmeg. International, they'll pay the vendor for the body, so it'll be just one, one check going out for a total of 165,677.36.
They're, they're taking the other couple, the other truck? It's a trade-in. 35,000, yes sir. And the lift gate you mentioned, it's, it's not necessarily a lift gate. It's what they call a high lift gate. So when the body of the truck goes up, the gate goes up with it too. What we have now is what they call a barn door. Driver has to get out, physically maneuver this door. It's very heavy, very big. Swing it around the side of the truck and chain it to it. We want to eliminate that, so we're going with the high lift gate. It was only 1100 dollars more. Makes perfect sense for this flipping the switch that we don't endanger anymore.
Right. Anybody else? Councilor DePoe?
And how long do you expect this truck to last?
10 years, hopefully. We always go beyond. The normal rotation is 10 years, but I've never seen one rotate out of 10. It's always longer.
Right. Deputy Mayor Garish?
Quick question. The, the old truck, was that traded in or sold outright?
Traded in.
Was.
Yeah, which, and that's when you look on page 3 of that quote, there's the 35,000 that are traded in.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do we need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 4 September?
Second.
Anyway, we have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, extension, motion carries, announce. Thank you, Eric. Chief will bring you up. We're gonna do 714 next. 714 is the purchase of 35 9-millimeter weapons.
Good evening. We have a asset forfeiture account, and we have the opportunity to purchase 35 9-millimeter which will equip the entire department with a new weapon. Our vehicles are at the end of their shelf life. They're, the, uh, it, it, we, we run the risk of potential failure or a jam or something with a weapon with the age of them at this point. Our guys do a good job taking care of them, but they still have value. On the trade-in, we were able to acquire 14,556 dollars' worth of weapons for 6,856 dollars, which will be out of an asset forfeiture account, so it will be at no cost to the Groton City taxpayer. The 9-millimeter weapon, FBI studies have shown the caliber of weapon and stopping power is as effective as a 45 in short range, and the accuracy of the weapon, because of the ease of the size and caliber of the weapon, is, you'll have more accuracy of fire. Also, for cost for training, the 9-millimeter round is a cheaper round to have than a 45, which will save us money in training, training budget moving forward.
Any questions? Councilor Russ?
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you. Where's the money coming from?
Asset, asset forfeiture, which is our officers are working as may have made a seizure in a narcotics case, things along those lines. And so they're utilizing that money, that revenue stream, there'll be no cost to the taxpayer.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor DePoe?
I just have a comment. I, I don't know how normally you purchase weapons, but I just was happy to see that we're utilizing a, a business right in the city of Groton to purchase these, and so I just?
Actually, no.
We've got quotes, one of them was from?
Oh, is that not?
Yeah.
The local business, or the local business from the interstate companies.
Is that any different?
It should've been right on top though.
Oh, you know what? I got it mixed up in my other, in my other.
We always seek to use a local business wherever possible. This was a dramatically?
Oh, okay.
If, if it's ballpark, obviously we would go, you know, prevailing with the local business to keep the tax money.
There's $3,000 difference. Councilor DePoe?
And how long have they, have you had the ones that you're trading in now? How long?
10 years plus.
Okay.
And, and we live right on the shore with salt air.
Yep.
One thing that we did with this weapon is we got stainless steel, which will keep well-oiled like a grinder, and, you know, so we won't have any rust on that, obviously. We won't have any issues there. Eternal mechanisms of the weapon should last a lot longer with that.
Deputy Mayor Garish?
Yeah, I moved it, the motion that we moved this to the council meeting of September 4th, I totally agree with the chief. Our officers should have the best. I support it 100 percent.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, extension, motion carries, announce. Next one is 715. This is the vehicle purchase, police department Ford Utility.
We looked at the state bid with MHQ. We're looking at a 2019 Ford Utility all-wheel-drive vehicle with the Oxford White. The standard state bid coming out is approximately 28,000 dollars. We'll have additional equipment, including computer, lettering for the vehicle, a cage and essentials, and inside the vehicle, the in-car video system that we have in it, that can be additional cost going in of a, raise the vehicle to approximately 50,000, which we did budget for, in, in the budget currently. We're coming to you early with it, because it's a limited run of vehicles being made this year, and we want to get in on it and get it on the line as quick as we can for our personnel. We still have Crown VIX out there, and I want to get to the all-wheel-drive vehicles. The other thing that this has, studies are showing a lot of police accidents in areas are, the officer has it reversed and pits on it. We do have reverse sensing on this, which will warn the officer, it's back in the book, which, you know, may eliminate offender bender and some liability to the city and downtime to these vehicles.
Any questions or comments for the chief? Councilor Russ?
I'm sorry, what was the total number? Because we've got 28, and you said something in the 50s.
The, the numbers that I have for you coming in are temporary quotes.
Okay.
And so I'm giving you an estimation as what we budget. We go over, we'll, we'll sort that out. And a lot of the reason I brought it in here, I want to order, because I want to get you the cheapest price I can.
We appreciate that.
And then what will happen is this will get the vehicle ordered, and then if the predication plus comes in over the 10,000 for all the cage and lights and all the other stuff, we'll come back to you with that. This is to get the vehicle on order.
Any other questions or comments? May I take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 4 September?
Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, extension, motion carries, announce. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Mary will bring you up real quick, because each should be quick.
Is the Beach and Parks Memorial request? So yes, there's a city resolution that was passed in '05 that we have memorial benches, trees and bricks around the telephone poles, the flagpole at the beach. We have two requests coming to you, recommendations from the Beach and Parks Committee. The first one is for a tree in Washington Park, for a woman that Elaine Spiney, I can't say her last name, but she was Elaine Vigilio, when she worked for us. Elaine actually was instrumental in helping us establish our east, our west side summer playground program, and we decided to run that. She actually oversaw the running of that. She unfortunately passed away last October '07, and so friends and colleagues and people from the West Side School and the Charles Barton School would like to put a tree in the park in her memory. So this is coming to you for approval.
And then there's a bench.
And then there's, yes. And then there's a bench from a family who spent their summers at Eastern Point Beach. It was their staycation, it sounds like, from, if you read the letter, a family of four. It was the opportunity for them to enjoy their summers at the time when raising four children was probably a little more difficult. And so they, their mother, near the end of her journey with us here on Earth, went to Eastern Point Beach, got out of the car and listened to the waves, and it kind of satisfied her last moments with us, so they want to put a memorial bench at the beach for her.
Any questions or comments from Mary? Councilor DePoe?
So the, they want to put another, a bench, or they want to put a plaque on a bench that's already existing?
Well, if they, if they, if they do a plaque on a bench, they have, they have to purchase a refurbished bench.
Okay.
So, because then that bench becomes, you know, that bench becomes there. So a refurbished bench is a $75 purchase for us to repaint, re, if the white standards is broken, we'll fix it, and then we'll purchase the plaque based on what they wanted to, and the plaque varies in price depending on the language that's on the plaque. So, and then we, we work with the family as to where to locate it on the beach.
Make a motion, I would move that to the next council meeting on 9th floor.
Second. Wait a moment. Second?
Second.
Okay, wait a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, extension, motion carries, announce. Next is 713, which is ordinance amendment, control of pets.
So the Beach and Parks Committee decided to revisit this ordinance this past summer since it was a five year, it's five years old. It was approved in 2013. There were some issues with some of the language that's in the present ordinance, because it just says that presence on beaches, no pet leased or unleashed, be allowed on public-owned beaches in the city. And their thought process in 2013 was to keep pets and animals off of the beach property entirely, so that way we wouldn't be picking up dog deposits. People tend to bury it in the sand, and they leave it on the grass, they don't pick it up. People come in with their cars, this time of year, they're leaving their dogs in the car unattended, so we kind of looked at that as a safety concern, so they kind of wanted to present or make a recommendation to change some of the language that it's, that the dogs aren't allowed on the property as a whole, and that no pet leased or unleashed or in a vehicle is allowed on the property. I don't know how many of you were on this committee when, on the council when this was put into place in 2013, but we do have a, a large influx of people who use the beach with their pets, and then it also leaves a lot of cleanup necessities, especially this time of year when there's young children and families on the beach cleaning up after the, not everybody cleans up after their pet, unfortunately. So that's why this was brought as an ordinance in 2013, so it's just something that the committee wanted to make a recommendation to this, to the council for.
Any questions or comments? Councilor DePoe, your hand is first.
Have we looked into the cost of maybe placing one of those little dispensers with the bags where you can pick up your doggy poo?
Yeah, we have.
Do we have them at the beach?
We don't have them at the beach, because dogs have never been allowed on the beach property, so it's not something that they want.
Oh, I?
There was talk about putting one outside, across the street on the corner, but I don't know who owns that property. But when I, since I've been here, since 20, 2006, 2006, dogs had, at that point, weren't allowed on the beach property, in the rule and regulations, but there was no enforcement of that, because it's just the rules and regulations. So this was put into place in 2013, to have, actually got a fine associated with it.
The, on Shore Avenue?
Yep.
On the north end of Shore Avenue, there's a little parklet there that does have bags for people, and trash receptacles, so that people can collect the dog feed season to throw away.
Okay. I have another question.
Councilor DePoe?
Sorry. So, so I guess I'm confused. So dogs aren't allowed, I thought they were only not allowed on the beach itself, like the sand part of the beach.
Well, that's, and that's what the ordinance says, and that's not what the Beach and Parks Committee is making a recommendation. In the past, it's always been the property as a whole, but when the ordinance went into place, it just said the beaches. And the Beach and Parks Committee would like to make it the property, because it's always, it was always was the property, but when language was written in 2013, it kind of just specified the beaches, which interpretation-wise, for enforcement, it was the sand part. It's never, the only dog that's ever been allowed prior to, I mean, in the past, has been the dog that we, we pay to be there, which is the dog that helps us with our loose control. There's never ever, you know, people have brought their dogs on, even though it's been in the rules and regulations, and there's been a city ordinance that doesn't allow them on the, the thought process was not to have them on the property. It's just a recommendation from the Beach and Parks Committee, but in the, in the past, the rules and regulations have always stated that there was no dogs allowed on the property, but it was never enforced, because it was just a rule and regulations for the beach season.
Councilor Russ?
So, um, quick question. So the property?
You can wait. Deputy Mayor Garish?
Have to remember now what I had. So Mary, you're only looking to rewrite some existing regulations already in place?
Correct. We're just looking to change the language on section 1B of the city ordinance.
And would we be able to see a finished copy of that, that will be presented by the, the Beach and Parks Committee? I'm assuming that they'll rewrite it?
We did, they did at the last meeting, the August 8th meeting, so once those minutes are approved in September, they'll have the language, I think you guys have it, though, the language that they're looking to change.
Did I answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Councilor Russ?
So the property on Shore Ave. is owned by the city, correct?
Correct.
And that is considered a beach?
No.
No. What is that considered?
Griswold Point.
It's like a parklet.
Yeah, we call it Griswold Point, but we don't, we don't, we don't maintain or take care of that. That beach doesn't have access to it. It's just, it's actually, it's not technically a beach, because it's just an area where, oh, sorry.
No, no, hold on. I think you're, I, hold on a second. What I'm talking about is the grassy part on the water side of Shore Avenue.
Correct.
Right, now we passed the golf course. You got the golf course over our side, you had the road.
Right by the golf course. Right where Griswold is to be.
Right as you start to turn around, right. That's what I'm referencing.
Right.
I'm not referencing the sandy portion that is only available during meadow tide.
Yep.
With the dogs though, dogs are there.
Mm-hmm. I, I think this is too vague if that is, if your point is to just eliminate dogs from Eastern Point Beach.
But that's not Eastern Point Beach.
But that's, but that's. No, no, that's what I mean. But it's not considered.
He's talking about beaches.
If this is saying presence on beach properties, not presence on Eastern Point Beach properties, because I would interpret.
Okay, I don't know where there's another beach in the city. You guys might refer to that, where the storm wall, I mean, there's a wall there.
Right.
And there's a sandy area when it becomes low tide, but it's not a beach with a name, it's not, it's not something that's accessible during certain times of the year because of vegetation, so I'm not quite sure if you classify that as a beach.
I think she's saying that, because you're saying change the beach to property, and if you say property, is that, is that our property?
But it's not a beach.
I know that, but if you're saying change it to property, that eliminates dogs from property.
No, from beach properties.
Presence on beach properties.
From beach properties.
Yeah.
So if you're pointing, if you're pointing beach property, so that the parking lot?
Right.
Are you done?
I'm not. So that's okay.
I don't, I mean, if that has a name and we don't know it, let me know.
That's fine. I just, I want a clarification on that, as to whether or not that's considered a beach property. I think that that could be misinterpreted at another time, which is why I'm asking it.
Hold on, hold on.
My other concern is, I completely understand not having dogs on the property during the summertime, and however, do not completely agree with not having dogs on the property in the wintertime. People go running with their dogs and want to run down there, people go for walks and want to walk down there, and I think excluding dogs during the summer makes sense, when we have a lot of people there on the sand and a lot of people there, you know, walking around barefoot. I don't know that I agree with it during the wintertime.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Councilor Carter?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, more along the lines of that. Do you know how, how long this has been implemented?
The ordinance has been in place since May of, well, it was approved in June of 2013. So it's five years old this past June, the ordinance was.
So do you recall, do you recall the reason behind that? Could there have been a reason about mentioning just the beach as opposed to beach property because of that, because of people walking around there?
It was, it was, it was, my understanding, I, I wasn't part of this development of this ordinance. It was something that the mayor and council, the previous, the mayor and council at that time did, because of the number of complaints that we had of people with their dogs on the property, because it stated in the rules and regulations at that point, up to that point, that the, that the Beach and Parks Committee bring to you every February, March, that dogs were not allowed on the property. When this was developed, you know? Um, when this was developed, you know, twenty thirteen and, um, they, you know, this is, an ordinance is year round. It's, it doesn't have a season. This is something that's implemented year round. Uh, the rules and regulations were just for the season. By interpretation, the Beach and Parks Committee didn't see it that way. They felt that dogs shouldn't be on that property year round. Um, and it's just the nature of the nuisance and the cleanup. As easy as you say, there's, at this time of year, yes, there's more activity. But unfortunately, there are pet owners who are responsible pet owners, and the preseason and getting that beach ready, you're cleaning up after dogs that have been there all winter. And you're also dealing with, um, there are issues where they just let their dogs run ramp, you know, just run on the beach and run loose, which if there are other people on the beach, there is a, a hazard. Um, if that dog, you know, it could bite somebody, you know, just, you know, just little things that they looked at when, um, the Beach and Parks Committee was reviewing this.
Counselor Carter.
Do you, do you know what's our common practice with, um, the other local beaches?
I do not. I could look. I don't know if that was looked at either in twenty thirteen, so.
Counselor Carter, anything else? Uh, whoa, oh, I lost track. Hold on. Counselor Sheffield.
Uh, yes, in twenty thirteen, uh, the mayor and deputy mayor, we were, uh, we were part of that ruling of that ordinance. And the reason was, we didn't want dogs at the beach at all. And that was our vote at that time. And we didn't want, uh, you know, dogs on the property due to the fact that people were not cleaning up. And, um, we felt that it was necessary that, um, dogs had to stay off the property. Out, and which considers beach parking lot, that was, that was it.
Anything else? Okay, Counselor Debo.
Uh, I would just like to add that I am not a dog owner or a dog lover per se, but I think I've gone to Eastern Point Beach for my whole life and I have never had a dog run at me. I have never seen anyone complain about dogs, and I do think that, I, I think there's another way other than just excluding them completely. As Counselor Russ said, there are a lot of people who go walking in the winter at the beach. And I think that maybe we could look into, you know, what the cost would be to, to install one of those dispensers. It does encourage people to, you know, pick up after their pets, and I would rather see something like that than to exclude all those people from the beach.
Counselor Russ.
Um, I believe we have leash laws in the city, correct? So-
I believe it's this ordinance.
One more time?
I believe it's this, this ordinance.
No, I believe there is a leash law in the city that says, no?
Is this state law?
No, it's a state law. The state law says that you have to keep your dog on a leash unless it's controlled. Um, I guess, I, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I just, I feel like, I, I get wanting people to clean up after their dogs. I am a dog owner. I'm very vigilant about cleaning up after my dogs. I think it's very important, and it does bother me when I'm going for walks with my dogs and there's dog feces sitting wrong anywhere. Um, you could argue that the dogs then shouldn't be allowed at the parks for the same reasons. So I have a hard time saying we can't ever have dogs at the beach, and I really feel like that's something that we should revisit and look at. Um, I know if we don't pass this ordinance, we're basically just falling back to the old ordinance, which says, you know, similar, it's similar wordage.
Well, it just, yeah, it just keeps them off the beaches. It's just off the sand park. I mean, but still, the other area and just another avenue of, from an operation standpoint, when you let the, when the dogs are there during the off-season, it's very difficult to tell an owner from June until September, you can't bring their, and they continue to do it. Because they've gotten into that habit of that morning walk down to the beach around the parking lot, you know, especially people that live down in that area. They stop at that gate on that first Saturday and they're told they have to go home with their dog. Uh, we, we deal with that for almost a three week period in the month, the month of June is, you know, because there are people who still today with this ordinance will bring their pets.
Well, the current ordinance just says they're not supposed to be on the beaches.
Correct, but that's not how it's-
But that's not how it's been.
That's not how it's been enforced because of the way it's been in the rules and regulations over the years. So they're not allowed on the property. So there's kind, there's, I guess, conflicting language.
Okay. David Mayor Garish.
Mary, could, could we, uh, move this to the Beach and Parks Committee?
Well, that's where I was gonna go. Do you guys want to send this back?
To study it?
To, now, do we want to send it to the subcommittee here?
Here.
Or do we want to send it back to Beach and- Okay, uh-
Well, the thing is, with just us, we, we, we're gonna, and I, I missed the, I mean, a lot of this, you know, I, I, but I, I feel like, um, in order, when, if our committee meets it-
Sure.
We're, we're not gonna get adjusted on the reason why they want to do that, you know? I know, nervous you're answering questions, but it's good to get a more of a collective.
Yeah, but can you meet with them?
Them, that's what I mean. Like, go to them. You know, so I said, we'll, we'll go to the Beach Committee and then have our, you know, meet that way.
Okay, so do we want to, do we want to refer this to our Beach and Parks Committee?
To our Beach and Parks Committee, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, the council's subcommittee.
No.
It's the Parks and Recreation and the Beach and Parks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would say, you need to, that's the, the person I would say refer back to, back to the-
Go ahead.
Back to the, correctly, the Beach and Parks and Rescue.
Beach and Parks.
Beach and Parks.
Yeah.
But procedurally, I think it needs to go to your committee first.
To bring it back to them.
To bring it back to them.
With proposals.
Is that, is that correct?
Well, it came from Beach and Parks, so you can, you can ask Beach and Parks to review it again and determine if they want to re-.
Because I, I, what I think says I can go back and, on our behalf and-
Okay, as our, as our representative.
Yes, that's what I feel.
Okay, so, is the council interested in sending this back to Beach and Parks Committee, the larger committee, for review and a, a review and another recommendation? Counselor Russ.
I think if we do that, it would be important to look at what other beach practices are.
Yep.
Um, which is the only reason why I would recommend it go to the Park and Rec first, so that we can discuss what we want to recommend to them. Because if every other beach in this area is saying no dogs ever, then maybe that is what we need to look at.
Yeah, that's what I asked her, she's just gonna look into it.
Yep.
Um, but I don't think it's fair to take their recommendation and just go, we don't like it, but we don't have a recommendation specifically for you. That's my- I mean, I think we need to-
Hold on.
We should, well, base, base, base-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on. I'm losing control of the meeting, help me. Go ahead, finish.
I, I would just like to discuss it and come up with a, a definite wordage that we are asking them to look at, consider, before we send it back.
Okay, Counselor, did, do you have your hand up? Counselor Carter.
I just think it's clear, it's clear cut, it's nice what we're asking. I don't think we need to talk about it, just.
I think Rashad wants to get more information from the Parks and Recreation Committee in regards to why they want to see it changed and then bring that back to you guys.
And we can go back to what we discussed. I mean, it's pretty clear about what we, we don't have an order.
Since he wasn't at the last meeting in August.
But who would research what other towns? You would?
I will, yep.
Okay. Okay, so what is the wishes of the council?
But if you, you guys, it's easier for me to relay information to them than, than, than to, to, or, or.
You think it goes, it should go to the subcommittee?
I think we need a consensus on what everybody's thinking before we-
Yep.
I, I feel like-
What are you thinking?
I don't agree with this. I think we need to look at dogs being allowed on, in non-summer months.
Okay, so if it goes back to whatever committee it's gonna go back to, all this is gonna be looked. Okay, Counselor Beckford. Do you have any overall thoughts in, either specific or in general?
I think it's important that we look at what the other beaches are doing, um, and so however this gets routed, we should definitely take a look at that. Um, and I, you know, I've lived by a couple of parks, um, we have a lot of dogs, um, it's not usually a problem where dogs are unleashed, but I have had an occasion once or twice. Um, so, I mean, I, I, but that, that falls under the state, so, um, yeah, I think we should just take a look at what the other beaches are doing.
Okay.
With consensus.
All right, David Mayor Garish.
Uh, I, I, I just don't like to kick it back to the Beach and Parks Committee without some recommendations from us as to what we're looking at. That's why I thought it should go to our Parks and Rec Council Committee. And, um, the two committees could discuss it and then bring something back to the full council.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Sheffield.
I stand by the twenty thirteen ordinance that, uh, we had for no, uh, pets on the beach.
On the beach as in the beach proper, not the beach property?
The, the entire property.
Okay.
As far as our ordinance when we signed off in twenty thirteen.
Okay. Counselor Debo.
I think that I don't like that the rules don't match the ordinance, but I don't think the fix for that is to make the ordinance stricter. I, I think that we should look for alternatives because, unless, like Counselor Russ said, unless every beach, that's like the accepted thing, then that is something, you know, to consider. But I think I don't like to exclude more people from enjoying the beach. I don't like the idea of that. And that feels like it's what it's doing, even, even if we're, we're obviously saying you can come without your dog, those people are going to not come to the beach.
Okay.
And I don't like that idea.
Got it. Counselor Carter.
Yeah, uh, I, I enjoy having, I mean, I, I, I run, you know, I don't have dogs, you know, but I can see how some people want to walk their dog down the, um, the, the, uh, the walkway.
Sure.
Or not, you know? I understand, but have, you might have to walk on the beach, um, so I do think this needs to be, that needs to be looked at, but, um, how you guys want to handle it, I mean?
All right, here, here's what I'm gonna recommend. I'm gonna s- send it back to our subcommittee. And our subcommittee will look at, what does the ordinance say? What are the regulations say for the Beach and Parks? Also, seasonality part of it, what do other beaches do? Get all that together and then work with beaches and parks. Does that make sense? Is that, is that reasonable?
Yeah, it's, it's, to me, uh-
I realize, I realize it's gonna add-
It's the same thing as, as put city to them first, because I pretty much know what you guys are saying.
Well, I, well, I know, but, but this way, the coun- the counselor, the, the three subcommittee members, and if the other co- comm- other counselors want to attend that meeting, can, can attend the meeting, provide input. That gets, I don't know, shaken up and looked at, and then it goes back and vetted with Parks and Rec. Right, or beaches and parks.
Beach and Parks, yep.
Beach and Parks.
When does Beach and Park meet again?
The sec-
Every month.
Uh, the second Tuesday, September.
Second, when?
Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday.
So that would be after our meeting anyways?
Right.
Second Wednesday.
Cause your next meeting will be the second Monday. Is that, what'd you say? I didn't catch what you said.
No, I, we're, I think we're on the same page. I, 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 you know, you're, if he's clear on what he wants, there's three people on the committee, I pretty much know what she wants. So I would say, you know, why, I don't understand why we can't just go to their meeting. It's easier, a lot easier to get two people to go to their meetings than have seven people on the committee go to a three-person meeting, but.
Okay, hold on. Counselor Debo.
What time is their meeting?
Seven o'clock.
P M?
P, yeah. It's on the tw- about September twelve, I believe is the-
They can pay out one meeting after that, too.
Second Tuesday, September, Wednesday, why do I keep saying September twelve? Twelve, yeah.
We still have to always have ours regardless.
They'll hold it, they'll turn it some more, or they'll...
All right, hold on. Counselor Devoe?
I, as the mayor, or I think that you stated, some other council members might want to attend, and if they're already attending the other group meeting, it would be easier to attend the subcommittee meeting than the, the one that's on a Wednesday.
Right.
It's, it's supposed to be fine.
All right, and that's what we're going to do. It's going to go to your subcommittee. It's going to be referred, so let's capture this as an official referral. I know that's not what we normally do here, but I'm going to refer this... Or, or if you want, I can wait until Monday, that's not true, uh, until Tuesday, to make the referral because it's still before the second Monday. So is that from a Roberts Rules procedural order? Would you prefer that? Okay, then we'll do that. So that's what we're going to do. Under committee referrals, I'll refer it to the committee then, and I'll reference this meeting. Okay? Anything else for Mary? All right, that's it.
Thank you, Mary.
Dennis, come on up. Rod, I'm going to save you till last because yours is going to be lengthy. Let's talk about 710 first, which is the Tax An increment Financing Policy.
I had drafted over here, uh, a new procedure, uh, to take a few moments to kind of review the high-level reviews of the policy, uh, and ask you any questions. So... You know, the draft analysis from, uh, Harbor and, uh, Presentville, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, had a few master recommendations, uh, that I've talked, others about, while we're talking, we can see a perhaps a few minor tweaks that were being adapted. So the first step in the process is a policy in place, uh, the policy, uh, uh, those two, uh, different things, uh, uh, it sets the process by which a district, uh, uh, to approve. It establishes the criteria of what is public district structured, what first financing standpoint and end of standpoint. And it also spells out what needs to be submitted as part of the approval process and what the master plan actually was. And when I say master plan, it's not through pictures and rendering or something that I've seen in architectural, but it's actually a written document, um, that really describes what the vision is. There's two types of master plans that are going to define the policy. There's a city-only master plan, uh, you know, city-only master plan, you can only capture or utilize the revenue from the city's tax portion. Uh, then there's the joint master plan, which is adopted by both the town and the city together, but there you could realize the full, uh, assessment values of, of the properties. It will require a public period process, uh, of the, the joint, because the joint public period process is separate, that's just temporary, it's not defined yet. Uh, uh, under the city-only, uh, you can only do the public period process just as a, uh, a, 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 uh, 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 getting to some of the, uh, uh, I'll say technical side, it says, um, well, state law, now it would be, uh, fifth district, you know, the last 150 years, our policy states thirty years. And people who are part of, and trying to figure that out, but there are certain things, uh, people that are, uh, exactly right. While you can capture and utilize a hundred percent of the increments above the base of the boundary, uh, our policy says 150%. Um, can we realize, um, uh, for capture, uh, according to the caveat, that that could change of, uh, the ten years, so it's... One required legal standpoint, this is statewide, uh, in this case, in our TIF, uh, policy, uh, the total value of all of the TIF districts, to both the town and the city, cannot be more than 100% of the way. Uh, they're pursuant to, the town pursuant to it, uh, uh, so as those in this process, assesses, fully gather all the number of significant organizational valuations, that you're ever saying, you know, that 100%, uh, ideally by my, uh, uh, what, say, the low 100% is not the right answer, that's questionable, uh, uh, changes. There's five components of the master plan, has the funding policy, the first is district master plan, which, uh, talks about the core, describes boundaries, uh, kind of states the vision, uh, that says what the money can be used for, uh, whether it could be utility dollar, certain private property, uh, identify public infrastructure, or if it's street skate, sewer, or illegal, uh, 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 it could be policies and burglaries, or we could provide burglaries on businesses, or paying staff dollars, public staff dollars, other as well. But there were broad steps, you're going to have to be applying the master plan, so we do, connect this with all, we have to very thoroughly, who possibly can, uh, otherwise you have to adapt, you have to deposit, you have to, you have to, you have to, uh, include it. It also has the financial plan, uh, which, uh, this defines the, the master consent, uh, that we capture, uh, how the funds will be managed, uh, infrastructure, uh, and then the type of, uh, uh, financing structure for public private areas, which are possible. The operational, uh, maintenance management, how to, they, uh, district is managed for staff, according to another, uh, uh, what is the main office, uh, one more, because I did, uh, find that's a lot. And then just some of the legal stuff, uh, for example, support, you know, for, for, so that can, so it's similar. How projects will be funded, uh, private developers, uh, the selected mechanism, uh, I happen to say an expert on credit against performance, uh, but, uh, that is the ideal, uh, measure to fund private development. Essentially, that is, uh, uh, the increment above the date of assessment of the property, what stage it's in, uh, the town receives the money, and refunds by the all, or partial, or back to the, or in this case, how is the funding policy, who will refund 15%. What that does is up the asset, develop the squats, sort of, whoever's still financing, uh, structure, uh, whatever. There's, uh, certain caveats to that, it's still not part of launch, uh, needing, which needs to improve, and they look for other opportunities, um, and if they are extending rate of circumstances, perhaps businesses leaving, they need to get jobs, they need to get jobs, uh, uh, the, uh, the management team, uh, certainly creditworthy, uh, be a good standing, uh, they have to invest some, some, uh, dollars in the capital, but into, uh, into a project as well. So there is a list of caveats, and we agree, uh, we need, uh, finalize, or it's a field right here, for our, just case-by-case basis, so we need to, uh, city, town, town, uh, uh, councils, uh, current, uh, board of people, so... Well, the CEA is the, uh, preferred, well, currently because it has some meaning that can't, uh, read, uh, uh, the general risk of that, or, or the cap rate, or, 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 as well, they're there, uh, they just, uh, give you appearance, uh, for the, uh, third, that has some certain... Two of them are kind of like highlights, we, this is a lot of details about protection, and, 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 uh, the master plan, uh, I think that kind of sums up, still...
We've, we've talked a little bit about TIF before, the TIF policy, the master plan, uh, the TIF districts, so I don't think this has caught you guys flat-footed. Uh, I wanted Dennis to present this since he's the planner. I didn't, at one point, we were going to have John Reiner come in and present this, the, the, on Dennis's first day. I was going to be a Cal, and I said, "We're not going to do that," because now I'm having a town represent something that my planner's going to have to execute. And I wanted Dennis to get familiar with this, make sure he was okay with the policy, and then let him present to you as the planner. So that's why we put it off a month until now. And then, uh, so this policy, if you, if you decide, we'll go to the mayor and council meeting of nine four. You'll look at it then, if it gets approved then, we'll let the ca- the town council know, we approve it, they will accept it. And the reason that they will accept it is because it is not only city taxes, but also town tax money. That's why they need to accept it.
If I could add, uh, to the simple point, this policy, this is a radical, uh, policy that will, will be structured, that this is thinking, it's being city-owned master plan, and we're going to...
And Camoin, who is a contract, the consultant, the consultant that wrote, uh, and has been working hand-in-hand with the town, is the same consultant that did this policy here. So are there any questions on the tax increment financing policy? Counselor Sheffield?
Dennis, how are you going to thank you for, uh, sharing this information with us? Um, are we going to be using both types of plans, city as well as joint, or, you know, or we just want to do one or the other?
We're going to find funds, uh, to develop the master, the master plan, the state's own policy, the master plan, plus the city, or the city only, or, or, so, that will be a decision, uh, that will be, uh, to, 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 to preference, uh, staff, staff coordination officially right now, is, uh, the public town staff, if that, if you, if, uh, if, uh, if...
Counselor Russ?
Um, you questioned the 30-year versus 50-year. Can you touch more on that? Like, should we be looking at 50 years versus 30 years?
No, I, I have to do some research. I don't know why the decision made 30 years, uh, was better than 50.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you research that between now and next week? I was at the meeting when we discussed this, but I don't remember why. I think the reason was that 50 seemed so long compared to 30, although 30's a long time too. But they didn't want to commit to 50, but they were okay with 30. But I don't remember exactly why, uh, 30 over 50, so, but we'll get back to you. Any other questions or comments on the tax increment?
Uh, Dennis, how soon will be, will we be able to get started with, uh, the program?
Um, well, the policy would be, uh, uh, intentional, so next week, uh, uh, we have to finalize the, uh, the boundaries, but the way we're going to do that, I don't know, the ideas of, 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 the act, the, 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 uh, if you have that, because we're going to be for, uh, the actual, uh, probably start the actual, uh, uh, if we get, if we, and the towns, LSA would have the, uh, master plan done, uh, through the, uh, boundary, uh, during the meeting. So we would, uh, basically, we have a couple of, uh, facilities, uh, that are, uh, that are necessary, so I'd obviously be, uh, in the process of, uh, maybe, uh, so, uh, there's a lot of contrast, especially in the five corners area, uh, a number of people are, are, are interested in, uh, the company, so, uh...
We, uh, the town planning and us and the economic development guys, both town and city, feel that once this is in place, then we're going to have developer, because there are developers already asking, "When are you guys going to get this in place?" And, and the town is, is, they're ahead of us, but we're moving, you know, right behind them. And so you'll see, you'll probably see development with the tax, uh, excuse me, the TIF master plan in the town first, and then will be shortly after that, in a couple of months. I don't, I can't tell you, it's going to be September, October, January, March. I, I, we gotta, we gotta get there first. Once we're there, ready to go, then we have to find our investor. Counselor Devoe, Jim, anyone else have a question or comments on this? Okay, then I need a motion to move this mayor and council meeting of nine four.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any other questions? Uh, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries your answer. Page 711, which is Coastline Consulting, the ship grant?
So we have a proposal from Coastline Consulting, uh, Coastline, here's the, uh, company who, uh, actually works closely with Harbor, and, uh, who, 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 or, they, 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 uh, graphing, uh, their, their, great application, a lot, uh, of, 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 uh, they are, uh, indeed, they've moved the site, uh, they, 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 uh, they did, uh, Coastline, uh, they did, uh, uh, uh...
So they did the bulkhead project, they did the design of lower cost of property, and, uh, so therefore, that's why we want to go with that.
Um, so, the ship grant was 54,000, $40,000, applicable to the rest of the design, engineering, or page one, uh, page one, you can hand out, it's in the whole image, uh, so there's approximately eight slips, uh, plus a fast launch, that would be, uh, so this would be all permitting, uh, the word out, CO2, uh, we, uh, just being here, it's, uh, uh, so, uh, so, just to get us complete construction documents, ready to go, uh, we do not have a lot of construction yet, uh, I, 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 but, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, soon, uh, so, uh, so, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we should to, uh, submit, uh, the construction, uh, dollars, uh, put at the phase, maybe, uh, a million dollars, six, so, uh, uh, in the final phase, the future phases, uh, we see, you know, we have, the slips that are being, uh, designed now, plus adding a couple more, and that, uh, it's, uh, further surrounding it, uh, on the box, uh, the intent, when it's, uh, we, uh, at least for the first phase, we think, uh, we're, uh, uh, it's not in here right now, if you're, uh, uh, you'll also be arrested, uh, for, uh, specifically, uh, so, uh, so, we're asking here, so, two things here, one, we are, we are, uh, uh, yeah, and, and here's potential service, so we're just going to request the, the waiver, bid process, as far as our resolution, because it is over 10,000 dollars. And I think the sole source of the fact, uh, familiar with the property, that we're, uh, with the bulkhead, they work, to, in order to proceed the grant, as far as doing the documentation, so, we seem to, like, I'm, uh, uh, of course, uh, which will be, what, uh...
David Mayor Garish?
I'm, uh, just looking at this, uh, the final phase, but, and I know it has nothing to do with what's on the floor, but what about parking for this? Has there been any discussion or thought process on?
You know, the only question I don't have to answer, is it being intentioned that you can transfer, whether it's by accident, people from there, the by accident, which would be a part of this down the street, where the.
Well, there's, there's a parking lot at Two Latham, that's the one lot. There have been, there have been discussion at the council level, but, but no actions taken on what to do with the up cost.
Yeah.
Right, whether or not that could be used as parking, or possibly used for something else, with the something else to be determined later.
Yeah, I mean, I would think this, this has to have some parking facilities.
Well, if they bring the boat, well, they're not launching, they're not necessarily launching the boats there.
I know where people are going to be coming to their boat, in their car, and they've got to park it someplace to go down, maybe get on their boat.
Because then they get dropped off, yeah, but you're right, parking is something we have to look at. Something that's going to be coming probably within the next.
Intent, at least for the first day, we're not sure whether the future phase is the transit board, some of the people, like, live somewhere else, they have the people that come here and live there, and they park, they stay there, like, assuming we're feeding, like, people who are trying to be clocked on how it's managed.
Well, one of the, right, that's something that we haven't, we want to get the plan, want to get this started, and then at some point, we're going to need, we will talk about how is this managed? Are we going to have, are we going to have a marina that we're charging fees for, and actively managing those kinds of things? So that's something that's a little bit down the road. Counselor Carter, well, your hand was up.
Yes, almost like a parking meter type thing, you know, whether to be the whole day or not day, I don't know, but that's what I was going to say. Um, I've been down there a couple times, I run often, sometimes I take a break and walk down there, sometimes a break, you know? And the, um, the G, um, U facility here, is it?
So, is the push control yard?
Yeah, it's kind of a ISO, and have you guys thought about, like, spruce, spruce trees, or?
Haber-Vyde?
What's that?
Haber-Vyde?
Yeah, well, we're both tall.
They're Haber-Vyde.
Haber-Vyde.
Big tall trees.
Yeah, you know, the big trees, just to block, because, you know, because, I mean, you're down there, it's a nice property, then you look over, and it's like all, um, it's, you know, it's, it's industrial stuff, and that kind of takes the whole vibe of the marina look out, out of the whole deal. So I don't know if that would be, someone would be involved in this, or if that's something that Ron would have to look at, as far as possibly just, you know, just as an aesthetic thing, you know, I don't, you know, I know you guys both been down there, and just look over to the right, and just see the look they're doing there.
Can I add that, related to the mayor's comment about the cars on the side of the state, we actually just initially said, we'd buy a consulting team through Massacre, and we're going to do a survey area, off, and we're sure we've applied a spirit across the river, and we're on, as part of TRIP commission, we wanted to ask, so probably get asked for, to evaluate, uh, its best use for house parking, both on the other side or the other side, whether it makes sense to the sole parking, or the development cars, or the, or the, we've had a lot of others, and, so, does it make any sense? Um, Counselor, uh, you need to, I don't know, I don't think that would make any, part of that short.
Yeah, I just wrote it, because we were all, and every time I go down there, that's what I feel like, and I just, never.
Uh, another thing that we are looking at, that will probably come in the next year or so, is revisiting Fame Street One Way, north to south. That will give us a large number of parking spaces available. Uh, I have talked to several people, businesses, and residents, and it appears that the timing is, uh, right, or very close to right, whereas years before, when this came up, there was a lot of opposition, a lot of opposition, but now, with the way things are changing, and with electric boat and things like that expanding, uh, this may be, and with the work, the development that we want to do on Fame Street and Five Corners, uh, you get into chicken egg ver, meaning parking versus, what do you get first? The parking, and then the businesses and development, you get the businesses and the parking, and they're kind of hand in hand, so the Fame Street One Way does lend itself to supporting that development down. Well, I'm not quite ready to do that yet, and I haven't asked, uh, Dennis.
What are you talking about?
Go ahead, Dennis.
I was going to say, if, if, um, we could actually ask for a study, if they, um, you do have, um, other than having a budget, then we could, we could add something more.
Okay, all right. So, like I said, it's coming, it's, it's in the future. We're, we're looking, we're trying to look ahead, not just year to year, and not just election cycle, we're looking three and five years down the road. We're trying to look at this, of how can we move the city forward? Okay, are there any other questions on the ship grant? Okay, with that, I need a motion, uh, to move this to the mayor and council meeting of September fourth.
So.
Second.
A motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's go to six fifty-five, that is on, Dennis? Dennis? Do you want to talk about TRIP? Well, six fifty?
Not six fifty-five.
Did you have any, well, Heidi? Than the letter support, but that's what I have? Okay, is there anything else that you want to talk to council about then? Okay, then we're not going to go to six fifty-five, that's done. Okay, thank you, Dennis. Okay? Utility director, good day. This, we are going to five sixty-one. And we will talk about ground utilities, electric, water, and sewer.
It's not on?
Is that not working?
Anybody hear me?
No, no. No, seriously, it's hard to hear me.
Okay, I can speak up pretty loud, anyway.
That's beautiful.
That's pretty good.
Um, what we have here is, I believe you've got the whole, um, financial highlights that David puts together, for each utility commission fee. So, uh, initially, the thought was that we were going to actually put together a summary, which was just a one or a two page, for each of the businesses, and then, um, the easiest way to do it is just not recreate anything, and just give the same documents. I'm extremely receptive to your feedback on that, whether you think it's too much information, if there's a different way to view it, um, please feel free to comment. So that being said, I'm going to actually give you, um, a very similar discussion as to what David gives the utility commission, and, um, if you can't find any numbers, ask me, and I'll try to direct us to the right spot. I'm going to, actually, if I hit a number, I'm going to normally try to get you the real we are, making the package. So to actually flip through the package, on the third page, you've got the electric balance sheet, and on the fourth page, you've got the income statement. And most of the numbers that I worry about operationally, would be the income statement, when I'm operationally thinking about, how the month went, and then what you'll see happen as we go through the year, the monthly's turn into two versions, one is the current month, and one is year to date. So because this is the first month, you just have month end in July thirty-first, because that is year to date. The next page is actually just the detail of revenues and numbers with kilowatts sold and stuff like that, to look at some details. So, that being said, the overall electric revenue for July is only a hundred and forty-nine dollars less than budget. So if you look at line nineteen on the income statement, where it's the fourth page, it's electric division comparative income statement.
Thank you.
That's the one that I use, like, when I'm looking mostly at it. And when I'm looking at monthly numbers, I go right to the income statement. What are the revenues, what are the expenses, how did it come out, and then most importantly, how does that relate to what would be planned? The first month, it's, you know, it's easier when you get six months into it, to see how you're related to plan, in the first month. So, uh, basically, if you look at line nineteen, our budget was four point one million dollars we wanted for electric revenue, our actual was four point one million dollars, we missed our target by a hundred and forty-nine dollars, so we have zero percent deviation.
I agree.
Sometimes you can be lucky, sometimes it was good planning. And as you go, you'll be able to, you know, see that the way that the finance guys put these numbers together in the plan, they're trying to get the numbers to fit what the actual numbers are during the year. The industrial non-manufacturing class was eight percent below budget, and was offset by all other classes of service. However, new rate applicable to the non-manufacturing industrial customer is designed to safeguard the bottom line from revenues. So if you look at, what's that saying? It's line thirteen is industrial non-manufacturing.
Which, I'm sorry, what number again?
Line thirteen.
Thank you.
And what you'll see is all those revenue statistics from line, uh, nine, rate through sixteen, are all different rate classes. So there's estimates on what's in every single rate class. You've got residential, um, you've got commercial, industrial, non-manufacturing, I think you can imagine what large facility we might have, have as a customer, if it's not a manufacturing facility, and then we have industrial manufacturing. As a general rule, when we present financials, we don't talk customer specific, can we keep that back? Now, weather plays quite a bit into how much electricity is sold, probably also how much water is sold, therefore revenues across all three businesses might be tied to the type of weather we're having, whether it's summer or winter. Cooling degree days requirements were twenty-one percent more than last year, validated by the hot humid weather we have been experiencing. And actually, there was one heating grade requirement. If you turn to the next page, which is called electric division schedule of electric operating revenue, energy, and customer data, if you look down in the middle of the page, there's a degree cooling case, that's how David says, geez, if we missed our revenues, or our revenues were high, did it have something to do with the amount of air conditioning that was run by all the customers? Because in the summer, air conditioning is a large energy user. That's why he was on there.
What was that, that's my what? I didn't hear that, that sentence.
Air conditioning.
AC.
Air conditioning is a large energy user, so it, it really does influence the revenue.
Okay.
Now, after you look at revenues on the income statement, you're kind of wondering what we spent. So O and M expenses for the month are twenty-nine percent less than budget. So, if you look at line thirty on the income statement, it says operations and maintenance. So, the budget was to spend about nine hundred thousand dollars in the month, and we only spent about six hundred and forty thousand. Therefore, we were about a quarter million dollars favorable on that line. Yes, I'll.
Go ahead, Counselor Russ.
Why such a discrepancy there? Why were you budgeted so much higher than you actually needed? Or why did you use less than budgeted, like?
Operation or maintenance costs, as a general rule, are budgeted one twelfth across, they're not seasonalized.
Okay.
So the revenues, David tries to seasonalize based on what they, him and he believe the lowing will be. O and M tends to be one twelfth grade across, so the first month of every year, we tend to be shy on that one. Additionally, I believe, if, there was a three week payroll instead of a four week payroll, which he also comments on, on the others.
Right.
It actually has an extreme effect on source, because the numbers are so much smaller.
Right.
So, the payroll will actually influence that also.
Counselor Debo.
Thank you. Um, I know in the grand scheme of things, they're not the biggest numbers on the page, but we skipped over, um, line twenty-three, where there's a twenty-eight percent decrease, of other electric revenue. What is that?
So if you look at other electric revenue, the budget there was twenty-seven thousand dollars, and the actual was nineteen thousand dollars. You may think that's big or not, but we don't actually plan on that. That would be services that the operations group is selling to other customers, and it kind of just flows. They're not, they're not big numbers in the scale of things, so it's just, we're just estimating that we believe we're going to have this much customer activity coming in.
So these are customers outside of the city?
It might be, um, a service put in, it might be a paid for job, where the guys are installing a service to the customer, other revenues that aren't coming in, do it away.
Counselor Debo.
So, for example, that would be if someone, like, wanted to install additional meter or something like that, those are additional, that, that would be under other revenue.
Right. And there's multiple things that can hit that category, because it ends up being a catch-all with the revenue.
Okay, so it's just non-rate based income?
Is a general rule, yes. And each month where there would be a large deviation in any of these, is a general rule, um, me and David would go look, drill into the numbers, see what that would be, pull it out, and then.
Thank you.
So then you actually add them together. And net income from operations for the month is thirty-nine percent more, the result of lowering up, lower operating expenses for the month. Net performance after the effects of TBC is forty-eight percent more than budget for the month. So that's just basically adding your revenues and your expenses, and seeing where the net is at the end of the month. So the net operating income for the month is thirty-nine percent, that's line thirty-two. And then you can see some things are really out of control, which is the TBC, money, all now pay that more, and it goes down to the bottom line.
So, let's talk about TV, the TBC debt real quick, because every once in a while, it rears its ugly head. We're paying off the TBC debt that, uh, when we sold the company, we could not get rid of. We owned that debt, it's twenty-eight million dollars worth of debt. Basically, we have it as bad debt that we're paying back the debt on that. Is that, is that close? Okay, how much is that a year, roughly?
I believe it's about, it's around numbers, generally when I talk on rounding.
Right.
Rounding means, I call it two and a half million, might be two point seven.
Got it. But it's about two point five million dollars a year of the debt that we're paying off for TBC. Do you remember how much longer we have on that debt?
About one retirement.
Okay.
So it's ten years.
Okay, so we have ten more years of that debt, and it doesn't matter who's in your position, who's in our position, that TBC debt is debt that was incurred at this point probably five more years ago.
Right, and, and the reason I remember that is because when, when we hit that, and that two and a half million dollars a year comes off your books, it's going to be a big wrath.
Right. Counselor Debo.
So just for clarification, uh, ten years from now?
Thereabouts. Any of these questions, if you want exact numbers?
Yeah.
I can actually go get exact.
Twenty-four.
That was going to be my next question, was what year, what year was it?
I think it's two thousand twenty-four.
Will it be done?
You think it's twenty-four that we're done? You think it's twenty-eight that we're done?
Why don't we get a ri, why don't we get a number instead of, I would rather not speculate?
Yep, I understand. So, for our next meeting, let's, let's come out, what's, what's, what is the, what is the year it's going to be done? So you may still be on the council.
So I, I just wrote on the list, TBC debt detail.
Okay.
And I actually brought this, because I figured you, you may, you may ask questions, but I wanted to make sure.
Okay. Please continue.
At this point, David always mentions days cash on hands, for the electric provision of sixty-five days. I don't, I, I flipped through, I didn't see it actually depicted here in a, in a line, but he watches the days on cash on hand, because that just is a reflection of what your spend rate is, and how many days you have in your checking account to be able to cover that. And it's a, it's often used as a utility health kind of thing. So we have about two months cash on hand, which is considered healthy. Some utilities might go three months, some people about two. It's, um, one of the things that the cost of service study brings out is a health issue. And one of the things pointed out for Bratton Electric is that, um, cash is not an issue.
All right, moving on, any questions on electric?
Uh, I got one more, a statement he normally makes.
Yeah, one more.
Which is actually pretty good, and it's actually on the, the detail page, um, with all those things, and it's down in energy, it says, uh, kilowatts purchased solar customers. And he goes, also included in the statistics, is the, in the energy section, are power purchased from solar customers? So, three, he wrote, three hundred and twenty-four thousand kilowatt hours were purchased from solar customer, solar production for the month, which is about eleven percent more than last July. So we actively do have people with solar on their roofs, and we purchase that power, and that's the value of that power there, showing that we are buying that back. It's just an interesting thing, because over the years, five years from now, that'll be another interesting one to watch.
So, Devin, Mayor Gary.
You buy the solar power back, which means we have to buy less from C-MAC.
Yes.
So is, is it cheaper to buy the solar, or cheaper to buy from C-MAC?
We buy from C-MAC a cost, we buy from the customer at what it would cost us to buy it, same price.
Okay, so it's a kind of a wash, yeah.
Which, which for Bratton is one of the reasons that it's not quite so advant, advantageous to put solar on the roof.
Right, yeah.
Can you repeat that, please? Why is it not advantageous? Because I've had a number of people ask me about solar.
Because it's the same price.
Because it's an equal number?
We pay our residential, or in commercial customers, the wholesale value of the electricity. In the ever-source area, you have net metering, so you get credit off the distribution portion of the bill, as well as the energy portion of the bill.
So if somebody were to get solar panels in the city, they still would be doing themselves. Personally, they would be saving money in the long run, because you'd be buying their power, and they wouldn't be spending the money, but they can do it, they just wouldn't be making as much money as if they were out. Okay, I just get that question enough, that I want to make sure I've got a correct answer. Thank you.
That's also why we use the energy, the, uh, energy conservation funds, to actually fund an independent third-party auditor to take a look at any solar deal, and do a cost comparison, and a payback analysis for our customer. So that's independent from the utility that's third-party financed by.
Hey, Counselor Russ.
Are we finishing up electric?
I'm, I'm about to answer, any more questions on electric?
I have some more questions.
Counselor Russ.
Um, so first of all, can I please ask that you not use acronyms without saying what they mean, because I looked up a lot of things, but couldn't find everything. Um, what does CLM rate mean?
Conservation and load management, so that's the conservation fund.
Can you explain conservation funds?
Everybody pays a little bit of their kilowatt hours, every month, on every bill, into a conservation fund, where the funds are actually collected up to C-MAC, and those are used for energy conservation projects, for our residents, upgrades of CFL, we might have, or an energy audit that you might ask for, we certainly do promise for that kind of thing.
Okay. You also talked about difference associated with billing cycles. Why is there different billing cycles? Because it said, the, the statement is, unbilled energy is thirty-one percent greater than last year indicated, that energy purchased but not billed for July will be recovered in the next month due to timing differences associated with cycle billing.
So, cycle billing means that, as a general rule, your meter gets read on about the same day every month? So the first week, second week, third week, fourth week, because July fourth was on the first week of the month, it's like the billing delayed, and revenues in all accounts, uh, were lower because of that. Does that, does that make sense? Did I hit it or?
So you couldn't use the week, that week of, you couldn't do that week towards?
The whole week?
It, it was counted towards the next week.
Because the holiday was in the middle, it set the billing cycles back.
Okay. Okay, so it's not typical, it's just happened because of the holiday?
It depends on the holidays, it depends on the. It depends on the holidays, it depends on the actual, it depends on the scenario.
Okay. Thank you. I think those are my questions.
Tina is really the expert on that, but that, I just gave you the adjustment.
Counselor Debo.
Uh, just for, because I know this well, because I have two houses in two different parts of the city, and I get one bill in the middle of the month, and I get one bill at the end of the month because of how they do the meter. So one of those bills has more of the month of July on it than the other bill because they read it at a different time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on electric? All right, moving to water?
Water. So I'm going to turn the page and then actually, I just changed from the, uh, revenue details for customers on electric. And you've got the Bratton Utilities Water Division balance sheet. Then you've got the income statement for the month. And then you've got another, um, detail sheet for usage and revenues as to that. And that's actually all in cubic feet. And then SOR is after that. So water division cash and the electric account is shown on line twenty-eight of the balance sheet. Due from electric is over one point four million. So there's one checking account for the utility. We pay bills in electric with it, we pay bills in water with it, and now we also pay bills in sewer with it. So.
Can I ask the question right away? You said you've got one checking account, but what we've all talked about is that water only goes to water and sewer only goes to sewer, and electric can be used for multiple purposes. So can you explain one checking account for all three?
The, the finance department in accounting actually monitors exactly what each enterprise account has coming in and out and manages to do, that's why this is important, it manages to do to do froms. The balance sheets, you're going to see at the close exactly how much is due to do from in each of these separate accounts. But a hundred percent, the money for sewerage is for sewerage, is an enterprise account. The money for water is for water, is an enterprise account. But there happens to be only one checkbook which we would say is electric. Because there's more money in that account overall, there's more spend. So I believe that's why that need to do from most of that. But you'll see it come up in water, and you'll see it come up in sewer. Did I say that?
Yeah, when you think about when you go and pay your bill, you're paying one check for all three of those services. You have two services and one service for every half. So it all leads to positive, the electric general fund account. So it sits in there, but the revenues allocated to all of the different funds are on side. And then it just, from the accounting standpoint, instead of moving money all around every day or once a month or even once a year, it just sits there in this due to do froms alone for the electric. But the money's sitting there, but it's truly for, for whatever sewer is owed used in those things. It's like a pool of cash account.
And, and that's actually why I brought it up, because you're going to see it on these balance sheets. The line twenty-nine says due from sewer division. So it's the same thing, and that's new. So there's actually a couple of due to do froms that you'll see in these. And that's actually really important to understand. Because people think that we, we can use the money from one for another, and you can. The, the, the accounts in the finance division will, they just can't do it. Days cash on hand for water division.
Hold on a minute.
Well, we're just going to, just going to expound on what you were saying. As I understand it, I mean, it's like having one checkbook, but you might write checks for a number of different things, just like you do at home. But it's all accounted for under your, whatever account you want to call each one. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I understand.
Okay. All right. Please continue.
Days cash on hand for the water division is two hundred and thirty-four. So there's a fair amount of cash available for water. The combined electric and water sewer utility days cash on hand is eighty-two. That's a, that's a new statistic. It just points out that overall, based on what our bills are, we've still got about ninety days.
Counselor Russ.
Where are we finding these numbers? The cash on hand?
David added up all the cash on hand with all the burn rates.
Okay.
He does that calculation.
But it's not on here?
It's not, actually. I was flipping through, seeing it, but it was on here and it's not.
So can you give me those numbers again? For water, it's?
Uh, it's two hundred and thirty-four days, so a lot. And then if you combine them all together, it's eighty-two days. So we've got the big filtration plant project going on in the water. The reimbursement process with the state continues to be timely, such as monies received from the state in time to pay bills without using internal cash. So we actually get the bills at the end of the month for the project. We submit them to the state by the first. They actually wire the funds into a checking, uh, a wiring account for us by, like, the tenth. And we pay all the bills by, like, the fifteenth. And we're not using our own cash to do it, it's being funded by the loan process. For fiscal year to date, over ten million has been incurred for the project and a total of nine million has been received from the loan and grant. So to date, for that project to date, we're about ten million dollars in. You'll note that there's a CWIP, we call it WIP, on line eleven of the balance sheet of over sixteen million dollars. Line eleven is CWIP, which is what's called construction WIP. WIP is work in progress. So as we continue to build this facility, and we don't have it online yet, that construction work in progress, rest line, will continue to go up, and up, and up, until you lever, you turn a plant on, and then you've now capitalized the plant, it moves into assets. It's on an asset right now, but it's work in progress. It's not hitting, hitting the point where you can start depreciating it. That make sense? Total revenues overall for July are flat to budget. The twelve percent negative industrial class variance was offset by positive revenue, residential revenue sad. So on the income statement, if we take a look on line twenty, total revenue, we budgeted about a million dollars of revenue, we got about a million dollars of revenue. And you can see the detail of all the rate classes in there. O and M expenses for July are twenty-nine percent less than budget. Net earnings before the project grant for the month are ten times greater than budget. So if you take the revenue line, line twenty, and now you look at operating expenses, line twenty-nine, you'll see that we were a little over two hundred, we were two hundred and twenty-six thousand favorable in O and M expenses. So our operating earnings were higher than expected. By about two hundred and thirty-five million. The rest of the numbers, um.
Counselor Debo.
I have a question. So the operation and maintenance, we discussed that that's lower partially due to, um, payroll, right? So are we anticipating that the, this month, the month of August, that that's going to be higher than budgeted? Because August is a five-week month?
Um, the first month was three weeks, August is a four, I don't know, not five yet.
Right now.
It's a five. It depends on, it depends on the weeks of day. And in, in O and M includes payroll, which is a large portion, but it also includes a certain amount of maintenance. And like before, it's the first month of the year and it's hard to get. There's a lot of stuff in progress, and usually you catch the end of last year and then the spin-up to get stuff in, it's done this fiscal year, um, since. It's like a lag, because you don't have this money, this year's money yet to spend. So the first week of, or second week also of this year, you're actually not in for the year. You're just not spending the money. If that makes sense? Then there's another thing that David normally comments on, and it's on the balance sheet, line twenty-four. He goes, the water treatment plant restricted fund, balance sheet line twenty-four, contains one point nine million for collections through June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen fiscal year. So that's line twenty-four, and you can see that we're actually reserving money to help us pay for the loan when the loan payments start to come due. So we're actively stashing cash. That's why the rate increases were done early to such an extreme amount. We're actually trying to stash the cash so we've got a little checkbook to be able to pay the bills to soften that loan level a lot. So that's actually very important in a global kind of understanding of it all.
Any other questions on water? Okay, we'll move on to sewer.
So on this one, David did quite a detailed write-up on page two of the summary. And I'm going to, I'm going to hit it in general. And then, um, as we do this, um, we, we'll conclude with the typical monthly bill. We've made comparison rates for the other systems. So back to July first, two thousand eighteen, the sewer division was moved from the city general fund to an enterprise account. Total sewer revenues presented for the first month of operation as the division of Bratton Utilities are thirty-five percent below budget. The budget revenues were developed by rate consulting as part of a cost of service study, which used historical cubic feet data from water sales to city Bratton residents. One of the things I want to point out about sewerage is, in addition to the cycle billing that affects both water and sewerage, we were, we were delayed with our water bills because we, with the bills, because we couldn't get the sewerage rate to pull through for next year. So our cycle billing, because of the holiday, we actually not only took a hit the first week, but we took a hit the second week because we had issues when we hit, generate the bills, to get the bills to come out right. So billing was in a panic. And when we did finally get the bills to pay right, people that normally would have received their bills on either the first or second week may have hit them not until the end of the second week or even the third week. Accounts receivable for sewerage was over two hundred thousand dollars. At the end of the close of the first week of July. So as much as the numbers may show a story that we're worried about what our revenues will be long-term, the first month, because of billing issues and the cycle billing issues, actually showed, it showed revenues a lot lower, that thirty-five percent, but thirty-five percent overall isn't necessarily a big number. It just happens that there's not, unto the sewerage account, a lot of days cash on hand to sit there and pushing it. So financial people that are watching the checkbook get really nervous when there's only thirteen thousand dollars in your checking account at the end of the month and you're washing. You're looking down, look at the bottom line. Thirteen thousand dollars isn't a lot when you're looking, they have total revenues for the year of four and a half million dollars. So.
Counselor Debo.
So to clarify that a little bit, and if I'm understanding it correctly. So right now, on the income statement, the revenue is below budget. But on the balance sheet, under accounts receivable, that's how much is due for current bills that are out, just in between being sent to residents and paid, or repayers rather, not for the.
Now, in a comp that's up and running, that number's going to come up to some number and kind of stabilize there because it's just how many bills you sent out the last two weeks of the month and how much is due to the last. It is just going to roll through. On the first month, you can see we actually billed out another two hundred and thirty-five thousand, but because of the waiver, that people get their bill, they write a check, they send it in, it didn't come in yet. And, um, after the last meeting, after David actually wrote up this, we, we really stood back and took a look at it and said, you know, this first month isn't really indicative of the way this is going to roll. Just take a breath, take a breath, and you'll have it.
Counselor Debo.
Sorry. So would it be accurate to add line fifteen on the income statement, total sewer revenue, to line twenty-one on the balance sheet, which is accounts receivable, and that's the actual potential income?
What you build, you can't do that. Because there's always going to be an accounts receivable number sitting there. Did I say that right?
Yes.
That receivable number is very included. So out of that three hundred and forty-one thousand, fifteen hundred, two hundred and thirty-five thousand has been taken out.
So okay, that's one of the.
So.
I believe that, if I'm reading this right, I don't think this is, I don't, I don't think this is accurate. I could be wrong, we have the checkbook here.
I'll confirm that when we come back next time.
All right. So you, we got a budget. And we anticipated a certain amount of money. And then you got your actuals, which is the real money that came in. So there's a difference between the budget and what the actuals are. That's where the negative thirty-five percent is. Okay? One of the things that, that you don't normally do, like you don't do, whatever your budget is, that's your budget. So you don't say, okay, we had a bad, we had a bad month, so we're going to redo the budget. So what you got to, what we're doing is what I said we were going to do, we're going to monitor this every month. If we have a, if we come under thirty-five percent now, then next month, if the same guys are doing the same deduct, then we're probably going to come in thirty-five percent under budget again. And people are going to, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? Well, right now, what we're doing is, we're not spending money we don't have. So that means there are projects, we're not doing the projects yet because we haven't built up an amount in order to start spending. One of the things that we've talked about in the beginning, or since January, is that this first year, we're going to need to evaluate it. I said we're going to evaluate it every month. And around the six-month point, November, December, we're going to look to see if we need to make some tweaks. One of the things that we may end up having to do is internally say, you know what? Instead of trying to go after this amount of expenses, you have a lower amount of expenses. And that way, you're not spending money that you don't have. We're also going to look to see if there's a way to, uh, lower the fees. That's a separate topic, a separate issue, but it all comes in when looking at this. So at the end of the first year, this. So at the end of the first year, this is probably not gonna be a pretty sheet, because you're gonna say, here's what we budgeted, here's what we actually got. But in the end, when you look at what did we spend, we're not gonna spend any more than what you got, you can't. And we're, and, and that means, but, but instead of maybe $2 million is what we looked at keeping, or building up to, we may go to a million, or we may go to 500,000. Even if it's at the 500,000 level, that is more than we were able to save whenever it was in, in the general fund. And that was one of the purposes for moving it from a general fund into a revenue account. So Ron, please continue.
Well, if you look at expenses, I'll kind of off David's wheel now, because this is what we're doing. We just looked at the revenues and saw that was 35% below. If you look at the expenses, which is line 26, 22 specifically the operation and maintenance expense, but if you look at the operating earnings, line 28, we're 31% below on operating, on operating expenses, 38% below, excuse me, that's line 26, below. So, you know, we're not, we're not going crazy spending money right now either, although we're doing normal expense maintenance items that were planned for in the expense side of the budget. We're actually holding back on capital. So we're, if we need a tool, we're buying a tool, we need gas for the vehicle, we're getting gas for the vehicle, the guys have what they need to do their jobs every day. There's no difference there. But we're held back on the non-bonded capital expense, which is about a million dollars in this group budget.
And one of the things that I have said is that we're making payroll. And there are some people that want to take exception with that or make an issue out of that. My point is, right now, we are, we're bringing in money to cover operation and maintenance. We're still building up so that we can get the money, so that we can do the capital expenses. You gotta make payroll, you gotta pay your guys, you gotta make sure you're doing the basic maintenance, and then everything above that that we're gonna earn is gonna go into the capital projects that we've talked about. So Ron, please continue.
Um, that was, I think, the major part we were trying to hit. There's actually a list on the mayor's board that goes through what he keeps talking about, and we've actually got that as a checklist to go through as we go through these meetings. We're gonna hit on most of those topics moving forward. Do you have any questions about the income statement or the balance sheet, and the way they all try to get, but that's what I usually look at, how, how well are we doing with the revenues? How well are we doing with the expenses? As you get into the year, are they about what the budget says, which means, are you doing what we planned to do? And are they on target or not? That way, and then you adjust the way you're thinking about your upcoming budget, and you adjust the years you go if you need to make online adjustments with your expenses versus revenues.
So going back to the budget, this first budget was designed by Rafftilis, and they talked to us, we were involved in it, but the design of the budget was based on 100% of the water usage from the customers going in, going back to the sewer. The reality is, there are some customers out there that have meters now that can show this amount of water does not go back to the sewer, it may go to something else. And so therefore, that amount is deducted. So that's a deduct meter, that's a deductible amount, and so therefore, that is lost revenue. Next year, we will have this year's actuals to help us base next year's budget on. So, and there may be other, either industrial or commercial customers, or residential customers that decide that if they want to water their gardens, flowers, or wash the trucks, or water their lawns, that they want to get a meter that is just for that. They'll still pay for the water, but that amount of water usage will be deducted from the sewer amount, and they won't pay sewer for that water.
But by the way, on the industrial revenues for this account, we did do a DDoD, assuming DDoD moves. So the budget has a percentage increase. When we went through that budget process, they all looked at me, and I ended up coming up with a number. The DDoD was greater than what I put into the budget, because I was asking industrial customers what they thought it would be, no one's really paid attention to it before, so we were just taking a stab at it. Now we're honing in on what it is. Also, that number is larger in the summer, and actually in December, doesn't exist. So just like the bills went active on the largest month of water use for residential customers, it also was for industrial users that have large air conditioning.
Yes, Sir Deva.
I was just gonna ask, I found this information very helpful, because there's a lot of, like, additional numbers in here that make it make sense a little more. Are we reviewing this at each month at the COW? Is that what we're doing?
Every, every, yes. We're in August now, so we don't have August numbers, we have July's numbers.
Right.
So what will happen is, this will be presented to the utility commission first, at the utility commission meetings, and then, not only because of timing of meetings, and then we will get this every month to COW. So every COW, one of the things that I've promised you guys, and promised everybody out there, all, all the people that are watching the meetings, is that we're gonna look at this, and we're gonna go, we're gonna dive into this every month and look at it, and see what does it mean, and do. The thing that you gotta be careful of is not to overreact. And that may mean you gotta sit on your hands and resist the temptation to start making tweaks. You need to get more than one data point. We have a single data point. That's all we have, a single data point. So we're gonna get another data point here for August. And I don't know what that's gonna show, but that's another data point, then we'll get a third data point, and that'll give us an idea on where we are for trends, and then if we need to tweak, we can look at what do we need to tweak, so that we can bring the numbers along. Is that address your?
Yeah, I just, and I stopped to give you line numbers and stuff, just to point out, the way, as a general, I read these? That's how, that's how I read them. I look at the revenues, I look at the other, and I set the lines. Please, in the future, stop me as much as you want and ask me a question, go point that out, but I might do it quicker. And then, if you have a chance to, ahead of time, you can work. But I'll do the same thing that David does with the utility commission, and point out the highlights quickly and get through it, so that I'll pull your eyes to certain things. And then if there's anomaly or something that we point out others, I'll point it out to you just the exact same way, that way we can talk about it. And then if you ever find something that's a little weird or quirky, I may not be able to answer it, I might go get the answer, bring it back next month. A week to the, to the graph.
Are there any questions on the sewerage income statement? Are you, yes. Okay, yes, we are now to the graph.
So, um, over the last month, the office, thank you, Geraldine, put together this, it's actually a rate comparison, it has two sides. The backside has the details of what the rate is, or you say it municipality, town, city, or whatever.
Okay, ours are separate, but that's fine.
Oh, okay. It's, I tried to pick.
Well, the, the original copy that you got in your package were black and white. And then we realized that we did not get this to you in color. I want to get this to you in color, because there's information on here that Con will go into in just a couple minutes. Go ahead, please continue.
So, just really basic, Groton's in yellow, the typical customer using 4CCF, which is what all these graphs were done, we raked through the analysis and everything, this is very consistent to the chart that's similar to this that you saw from Rafftilis and from the rate study, except the office has gone out and verified every single one of these rates with every municipality over the last four or five weeks or so. Well, at the last meeting, you saw a graph of it.
What does 4CCF mean on my bill? Like, where is that information on my bill?
It's 400 cubic feet.
So 400, okay. I'm just gonna compare it to the number.
Right. So 4 is a typical user, which means that the typical residential monthly bill should be about $31 a month for sewerage. The town of Groton is just over us at 32. I'm not gonna go into detail on all of these, I can talk about any town, and Mayor may or may not know why they're high or low. We also have Old Line in here with an asterisk, because there was a news article recently about what that rate is. That's the O and M rate for the Old Line, Shoreline getting added to sewerage, but does not include the capital cost of connection. And I believe that is pointed out in the back. That is pointed out in the back. We tried to keep all the details in the back. On the, the colors in the front, green lines are usage-based. Blue lines are flat fee-based. If you look to the fourth town from the right, is Middletown. Middletown has a usage-based rate for their water company customers, and a flat fee rate for their well-water customers. As a general rule, flat fees are more than the usage-based fees, because you've gotta make your revenue, so you take your total revenue, you divide it by all your customers, and there's your flat fee. A usage-based fee can be a little bit more dynamic, because if usage goes up in a project, there's certain portions of the costs that are, are usage-driven, like electricity use will go up as pumps run more. However, labor costs are fixed, so you've got to do that in the budget process to do that. But as a general rule, the fixed fees we're finding are higher than the usage fees. That's why we put them in color, because we thought that'd be an interesting thing to highlight.
The other challenge that we had is, what are the budgets based on? Are the budgets based on O and M, meaning operating and maintenance, just the basic operation and maintenance of the facility? Or are, or are they all in? Like, ours is all in, it includes operation, maintenance, and capital cost. So if you're, if you're looking at all in and capital, all in, which includes operation, maintenance, and capital cost, typically your rate is gonna be a little higher. Is that true, Ron?
That, that's definitely true. So these aren't necessarily all apples and apples?
Uh.
We, we've tried to make it as close as possible, but it's really hard to figure out. As a general rule, sewerage accounts are supposed to be an enterprise fund that basically contributes a lot to ours. However, there are ways to get ad-olorum tax-based for the capital, because a lot of these things transitioned from there years ago. So it still could be legacy, and there's still, that could still be, and I'm not gonna promise that better than all rates. The other interesting thing on this, this chart is New London is all the way on the left, and New, New London treats several of the other towns' sewerage without one facility. So they basically have East Line, Waterford, and parts of Old Line that they're proposing to have to. So all those collection systems are all going to that one facility.
So they're charging more for the out-of-town guys than they are for their own residents. Plus, plus one of the things that you get into when you're looking at this is, what is the size of the, of the population that you're serving? For example, the town, Groton, is serving 30,000 people, right? And we're serving around, what, 10? Not a customer base, but around, the whole population is around between $9,500 and something and $10,000, depending on the day we are. Since this data, I think, is around 95. Is that, is that close?
Yeah, I mean, our numbers are based on customers, which is like 128, 100.
Yeah, accounts. Okay, any questions on this? Any other questions on anything that we've talked about in Groton Utility?
Is this, is this viewable anywhere? Is this on the website?
Not yet. We wanted to give it, we wanted to give it to you guys first. We will, let's put it on the website, so that people can see it. Part of the information, part of the, what we're trying to do is to make it available to the council first, and then we will release it to the rest of the citizens so that they have it, so they can see it as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
And actually, yes, well, we actually, it's already changed on top, we put sewerage, this is, didn't say that, and then Ron just made the comment, put residential.
Okay.
Any other comments? And I'll ask a couple more people to view it before we post it on the website. Also, if we post it on the website, it might help us to be self-correcting, because others might see it.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Okay. Anything else for the director? All right, Ron, thank you very much. We have one last thing, which is number one, is James Streeter Alternative Planning and Zoning? I think you guys got a, you didn't get anything for that?
Yeah. We did.
You did?
You did?
I didn't get any.
I did not.
Okay, most of you didn't. Then, he has submitted an application to be on planning and zoning, we have an opening for alternative planning and zoning. Oh, yes, but the, the, well, you have that, but the actual application, sometimes we send the application, it looks like you didn't get that. So, uh, he has been through his, through the Republican Committee, and they recommended him, and we do have an opening. And I think he's been on planning and zoning before, years ago.
He's been everywhere.
He has, he is, well, Jim is very knowledgeable on lots of things, and, and having him on planning and zoning, I think, will, will do well. So.
I move the, we put it on the September 4th council meeting.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Here you are, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, extensions, motion carries, announce. Excuse me, there is no executive session, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
I move the adjourn.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Everybody opposed?
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.